To go.
No, she's gonna join virtually. And I'm not sure if Larry Kleiman is back in town. He was in Florida for a while, but he might be back. And Brad Quinn was also in Florida for a while.
For myself some more?
Oh, of course.
Um, I was just had fed myself a glass of wine.
Can't drink at the town council.
No, I didn't ask you to. There was a little bit left from a week ago.
Oh, yeah.
When we first moved here, the board meetings, they always had wine.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. Was, yeah.
The HOA board or the town council?
HOA.
Okay. I was gonna say town council.
Town council only had one meeting a year, so.
Yep.
Is Nancy coming? Does she need lights in out there?
Oh, are the lights not on?
Yeah, she got some more lights.
All the lights we have are on.
So what's your process going to be for notifying people of meetings?
So it's just posted on the website?
You've gotta know the website.
Yes, which I sent out in the last email to everybody. The website was on there. So it's on there. But.
You're higher tech than I am, you know that.
Once we get into a groove, that's kind of my assumption is that people will know where to look for it. Um, we're also still figuring out how often have meetings, which is something that we might talk about today.
Hi Lana. She's muted.
Yes. Yeah, when people join, they're muted off the back, but then they can.
Hello.
Good to see ya. Morning, Dan.
Thank you.
You're back from Florida?
Yes.
How are you, Larry? Do you still go to the Gaspar?
Yeah, we do, yeah.
Remember one year it got stolen.
Uh, two out of the last four years, it was really destroyed badly, but. It's, I mean that. Yeah, thank you.
And I apologize, I'm going to be checking just to make sure. Last time Brad Quinn had trouble getting in through um Zoom. So I'm just gonna try to make sure that I'm paying attention in case, case he emails her.
Okay.
Says that he's gonna have any trouble. I'm not sure if he was planning to join in person or.
I haven't talked with him.
Okay, gotcha. So we'll give folks just a couple more minutes in case. I'm not sure if Nancy Buxer is gonna join in person, or she'll try to join virtually, or.
Yep.
Oh. She's such an early evening person.
Yes. I know, so we'll talk about timing for meetings and all of that today too, just because.
And her joining virtually, there's something there.
Uh, no. Trying to find devices on my network.
Come over here.
I'm sorry.
You've been.
Oh, great, thank you. Yeah. Everything's good.
This is your time of year with all the leaves, isn't it?
It's been so dry, I haven't mowed for it. Since before I went to Florida.
Do you know your own lawn?
Yes, I do.
You do? Oh, my gosh.
Have you ever ridden?
No, it's a walk.
What do you do with all your reeds?
I mulch a lot of them and then they're in the area in the back where there are so many, I just blow them over the hillside. I don't bag them. You're not allowed to do that.
Are we?
No.
Okay, we're not allowed to do that.
Why is that?
I haven't figured that out. You can ask somebody else that question. I disagree.
You have to do it yourself?
Uh, you may choose to, you can cheat, because Rocky Mountain doesn't always do them. You could, I don't know, you choose to do their, do their own, but Rocky Mountain's supposed to do them. And they're not supposed to blow them down, but they do. Sometimes. I've seen them bombing, yeah. They'll blow, I mean, there's not much, there's really not much space between the houses that butt up to the ravine.
That's true.
For them to bag, they just blow down.
It's really good for the mulching.
It is.
Right.
Is that Bev I hear?
It is. Hi earlier, but you may not have.
Hi Lana.
Hello.
Convince Ed Ramtham.
Are you still in Florida?
I am.
I covered up your plumatus before I came down here.
Oh, yeah, is it getting cold?
It's quite cold, it's thirty-three and nine.
Oh.
Yeah. But then it's supposed to warm back up again. Yeah.
Good.
That time of year.
She has plumatus that were cut down. And they're tall and they're blooming.
Wow.
They were cut down like a month and a half ago to nothing, and they're blooming again. Crazy. They don't know the rules.
Clearly not. Well, we'll go ahead and get started and um and if others join us, that would be great, but um Lana has agreed to keep minutes, which I greatly appreciate. So thank you for doing that, Lana.
No problem.
Um, and if, depending on how the meeting goes, last time what we found is that Zoom will cap us at forty minutes, but if we stop the meeting and everybody gets off of the meeting, we can all come back on and then it will give us another forty minutes.
A new session.
So.
If everybody knows.
Right, so right now it's just Lana and I that would have to coordinate that, which I think we can.
We got this.
Yeah, we got this. Awesome. Uh, and so today we can just open it up uh for public comments after we do an approval of the previous minutes, so. Um, previous minutes Lana had sent out to the council. Did anybody have any questions or concerns? I don't have the previous ones out.
I don't remember seeing them, but that doesn't mean I didn't get them.
Oh, did I not send? Maybe I didn't send them out. They are posted on the website.
You know, I think I sent them to you.
You did, and then I think I just posted them on the website and didn't send them out with this one. So let me pull up.
I'd better check that one.
I know, but I'll show, I'll bring it up right now.
There isn't a lot there, so.
There is not. So just for everybody that is here that is interested, this is what the meeting website or the website looks like and for each meeting I will post the agenda and the link will also be on the website. So this was the meeting that we had on October the sixth. There's the agenda, the minutes, and then um so last time I just posted the video on the website, but all the guidance that I've been getting is that having a YouTube channel is the easier way to go for streaming and for posting a link. So in the future, that's what I'll do is post to a YouTube channel that I created and then put the link up on the website so that people can view
Okay.
the uh recorded meeting.
That's fantastic.
You know how to do this, don't you?
I do.
I was pointing to Larry.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so let's do this. I'm just showing the meeting minutes from the last time. I can print out a couple of these actually since we're at our house. That is easy enough. Where do you go get it? If you don't mind, that'd be awesome.
Cat wants to be at the meeting. Thirteen.
Yes, he's the social cat. Ryan's gonna get copies of those for everybody. Should just be a front and a back side.
How long were you in Florida?
Uh, about two and a half weeks. Yeah. We flew down this time instead of driving, which was.
And where we shook legs, I don't know.
It, we ju, we ran a place always on Gasparilla.
I don't know where that is.
It's um you know Engelwood or Venice or, okay, it's on. Okay, so it's like maybe in or south of Venice. Yeah.
How far of a drive is that then?
It's about eighteen hours.
Yeah.
Driven it many times. Last time I was like, hi, the traffic is so bad now.
Oh, I can imagine.
I don't wanna deal with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've already read them, so we're good, I'm good.
Lana and I have both read them.
So Lana, you got all your signatures?
I did, and it's all turned in.
Yes, thank you for doing that. It's good. All right.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Do we have a second to approve the minutes?
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Who was the second on that?
Uh, Larry. Larry.
Okay. I thought so, I thought, but I wasn't sure. Okay.
Okay, so we approved the minutes for last meeting. Um, something that as we are going, we're, I'm learning more about the rules for meetings like this. And I think as long as, so for town council meetings, there isn't the same rules.
Right.
For city council meetings for like quorum, and so if we do pass anything that will require a quorum, it's just that every, it has to be a unanimous vote if there isn't actually enough for quorum.
Okay.
So I don't think we have anything to vote on today, but just in the future, that's how quorum rules will work for our meetings.
And by the way, everybody's there but Brad, right?
And Nancy Buxer.
Oh, Nancy's gone too, okay.
Yep.
And I think, did I say something where you determined that we don't have to meet every month?
Correct. So one thing that um I did not put on this agenda, but that we should talk about is, you know, what we want to do in terms of meetings, how often we want to do that. I think, you know, monthly is probably not necessary, but I would like to be meeting more often than once a year. Uh, so we can figure out maybe what we realistic for that. Yeah, yeah. Uh, so I guess, I mean, do you all have a preference? How often do you think would be helpful for us to meet?
Well, probably every other month, just to keep in touch. And I think as we move through summer and next fall, we'll probably that last couple meetings meet close together because of the celebration.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And the budget and being able to maybe assign the budget out of meetings.
That was kind of what I was thinking. It sounds like you all have had in the past, just to kind of bop around everyone's house and try to catch everybody in between travels, so if we can do a meeting or the two.
That would be great.
Yeah, and I think technically there's supposed to be two meetings, so one that's the budget proposal meeting and then one that's the approval meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So if we did every, every other month, that's six times a year, and then if we had to have a special.
We could.
Right.
We could do that.
Yeah, so maybe just plan on doing bi-monthly and then one in like uh, late September and then one in October?
Yeah, like September, we could do um Zoom for our budget proposal.
Yes.
And get together for the budget signing.
That would be great.
You can get our quill pins and put on our wigs and.
Yes, I think that would be only appropriate.
I feel like it would be.
And if we need to make it earlier because of people's travel plans, as long as we post in advance, you know, that we're having these meetings, it's okay whenever we decide to do them, and because our budget is relatively straightforward, we should be able to do that. Yeah. Forward, yeah. Uh, we should be able to do that enough ahead of time. So for example, if September or October are really busy travel months, then we could have the budget uh meetings in like August and September or however.
Right.
Do that, so.
And I'll know what I'm doing next year a little bit more, so I won't hopefully need Emily holding my hand quite so much.
We also appreciate that.
Yes.
Your knowledge passing that down to us because.
I'll just a bit spreading. Back on the guidance I got in training.
Yeah, was there any specific training that you had to do for that? Was it?
The, the first year um AIM offers a I think it was a week-long training.
Okay.
For new clerk treasurers.
Oh, my gosh.
A week?
Yeah, but I think they've changed. Um, I felt, I actually was reading the, the link through the AIM booklet and I brought um I didn't know you were away. I brought something that I will send to you that talks about the town clerk treasurer training that should happen. Um, and they're actually beginning to track it. At one time, they weren't, they track it more for the cities and the larger budgets and the smaller towns just kind of got. Um, I went a couple of years in a row and learned that about three percent of what happened applied to us.
Mm-hmm.
Everything else was about um employees and human resources and
Right.
Stuff that goes with assets, tracking assets and selling things and whatnot, and I would just sit there looking blank thinking.
Well, Emily, I'll be home Thursday night, so I could kind of get with you this weekend, or you could hand it to Bev. I'll see Bev, I'm sure.
Yeah.
If she'll be around.
Um, yeah, that would be good. I mean, any trainings that we need to do or like resources that are available, I mean, I'm.
Yeah, I think they've updated a little bit. I unfortunately, I didn't, I pulled this off the printer and I didn't realize that I truncated some of the training.
Oh.
Um, but it talks about complete at least five hours of beginning training. And then thirty-six hours every four years to attend a clerk, a conference, but again going to a four-day conference and having nothing there apply to you, I'm you know, I'm not sure how they um yeah, I'm not sure how they.
How they track that good, or if they do.
Right, how much they actually hold people to those. Like, this would be where we can try to coordinate with Windale and see what they're doing, because their town is probably the next closest in size to ours. So I would wonder if they have similar experiences where.
They, theirs is, they're, they're much bigger than we are. There are a lot of little towns like us. We have like well, a hundred people, depending on the headcount and who's moved and who hasn't.
Uh, Windale was only like two hundred or something. It's, it's also relatively small.
Relatively small, but there are more in between. They have many, they have more council positions and they have more um, things that they have to go through.
Oh.
I don't know if they still have the private police they used to have. Um but they had a, they had people um, that they were, they were paying and it just took a lot more time.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, whether it's Windale or another one of the tiny towns we can see.
Oh, Crowsnest is smaller.
Oh, really?
Population of sixty-seven.
Ah. Where's that? Close to?
Crowsnest. Yeah, that's right over here.
They've just built a couple of new houses, maybe that's up to a little.
They're trying to get as big as we are. So.
I have a friend that lives in Crowsnest, I think. I could see if I could get a name of somebody.
Well, Ed Ramtham knows all kinds of people over there.
Okay, good. That's probably better than.
Lived in Highland and he knows a lot of people there, so that would be a good.
Perfect.
Absolutely.
There's also North Crowsnest, which is only forty-four people.
People are units.
People.
So we can't use our sign to say the smallest town.
Right, not even the smallest town in Indianapolis.
We're the third smallest, I guess.
Ah, dang it.
In Marion County.
But we don't want people to know we're here.
Right.
Well, we do and we don't.
Yeah. Uh, Lana, is there anything else? So I gave everybody a copy of our current financials, just so that people had a sense of what was going on with those, but is there anything else you wanted to bring up?
I don't think so. Um, as I, I had sent you an email today, we did get the Board of, Board of Accounts paid and we paid the Spring Hill Preservation Alliance. That one actually is not cashed yet, but I excluded it in the numbers I gave you.
Okay.
Because I never written the check. Um, and I am, we have a two thousand dollar minimum that has to be in the account to keep no fees, so I just moved some money over. So um, our total balance is down year over year, but that's because of the state Board of Accounts and the webpage development, so. Not much else is happening. Dollars, dollars are trickling in and keeping track of them, so.
Appreciate that, and I do have the SHPA check, but I hadn't heard back from Larry Steinberg about cashing that, so I don't know if you wouldn't to take it to give to him at your next meeting, or I can still hold on to it, I just haven't heard back from him yet in terms of when it would be good to get that.
Whatever is helpful to you, I'm glad to do.
Okay, yeah, I'm always just happy to have it off my hands, so let me grab it really quick, so just be like, okay, well. Pass it on.
Are you planning to come to that meeting?
Uh.
At one point I was thinking you said.
Yeah.
Ex officio.
Yes, if that is still okay, I just, I don't know if I heard, okay.
Oh, everybody said yes.
Okay, so then yes, I'll be at that meeting as well, so I can bring it to that meeting. That's fine. There's, I'm just like, I just want to make sure Lana knows that I'm not just stealing, you know, funds from the town.
I'll have a new car soon.
Yeah, if you see me driving around.
One part at a time with the.
Nineteen ninety-two.
Very new.
All right. Uh, so then couple updates on town projects. I've been contacting people from uh the city at least a few times a week. I finally may have made some headway today through the uh right-of-way office, so now I have to contact the Department of Metropolitan Development and see if we need any approvals from them, and then once they sign off, we need to apply for an encroachment license in order to place the radar speed sign. Okay. So still waiting on that. I just got that email this afternoon and I tried to call a few times and it went to an office and they said, okay, we're, you're on the line, and then it went to press one for this, press two for this, but then it just hung up. And I tried to press both buttons and it was just a recording. It didn't actually let you do that, so I'm gonna send them an email to see if I can get a response, but slowly making progress on that.
But it is progress, more than.
Yeah, we've been getting some, something.
Something.
Um, but yes.
I did contact Joan Servais at Windale to see if they might be interested, and she's willing to talk to their board and learn more about it, so.
Okay.
I haven't heard back from her the second time.
And what I can do is kind of gather everything I've been learning about, you know, putting something in the easement and uh, what that might entail for them as well, so they don't have to try to reinvent the wheel going through this process. So, but that would be great if we could get one going both directions instead of just one.
I did tell Craig that I have a friend that lives over right off college and they're across from Forest Hills. And Forest Hills, apparently they had people speed through there all the time, so some of the people in the neighborhood decided to get together and put in speed bumps, but they didn't get it approved. So they were putting these speed bumps down and then like four days later, they're in there ripping them up because they didn't get the proper approvals. So eh, this will all be worth it in the end. I thought that was a funny story, though.
Yeah, we don't want to like invest all of our funds for a year and then have it get taken down. Just not be ideal.
His placement decided to be all figured out.
So that's part of what this um whole project is to try to figure out is if there are like specific studies they have to do for placement. Um, one of the concerns that I had was that if we put it in a certain position, if it's coming around a bend, people wouldn't see it until they're coming around the bend and then slow down, and the people behind them wouldn't know that people were slowing down, so. That is something we're trying to figure out is what the placement would be that would both be safe and also not a nuisance, so.
I was wondering if it could be placed by a pole.
Right.
For support.
Yes. Somebody who was talking about that, I think I met with the one of the town council members from Clermont, and he said that was something that I think they had also done with some of theirs, is put it up on a pole or right in front of a pole so that, yeah.
You wouldn't want to hit a pole.
I know.
They also.
You might decide to pick up.
They also move it around.
Yeah.
So that people, when you, you know, it's been there for so long, you get used to it, so then they move it to another pole. So it's another new thing. Now they take it apart and move it. Cause it's run by.
On Thirty-Eighth Street across from Crown Hill.
Mm-hmm.
That they put in on that median. It's only been there a few months, I think.
Yeah, so I, we'll see, I mean.
St. Luke's School has one.
Do they?
Over on Seventy-Fifth Street.
Okay.
There's a speed hump in a sign.
I wonder how they got approval for that.
Between um Spring Hill and Meridian.
Okay.
On Seventy-Fifth Street.
So they can get put up, it's just figuring out who to contact to make sure that they don't get taken down. So many people I spoke with also just seemed to have no idea what I was talking about or who I might need to speak with, so. We're getting somewhere.
Go find one, go get a building and ask how they.
Or just put it up. Who said that? Put it up and when someone comes to tear it down, ask them.
Right, yeah. Who was I supposed to talk to? Yeah. Okay, so I will continue keeping people updated, you know, the more I know about that, and when we get more information about how we can actually put it up, then we can decide which company we want to go with, and if there's pros and cons. I know um Larry had sent me one and Rob had sent me information about signs, so there's a couple of options to figure out what might be the best fit. They seem mostly the same. Some of them had different connectivity and, you know, things that, you know, you could accessorize with them, but I think we don't need anything too fancy. I'm not really looking for a bunch of statistics and things that they advertise that they do, so.
Sounds great.
All right. Uh, website, so we have the website. Uh, I spoke with people from the uh, so a little bit of background on this. The website was developed and there's a maintenance fee for the website that we have right now that I think amounts to something like a hundred dollars a month uh after the first year, which is relatively high compared to our budget. So I think, um, yeah, it's relatively high. Uh, and for some places that wouldn't be, you know, ma- maintaining a website like that would be well worth the investment, but for us, it just really isn't feasible. So the state of Indiana offers websites um that they will maintain, they'll help migrate everything over, create the initial website um, up to a hundred webpages, but then we can expand it beyond that as long as we do all of the upkeep and create the new pages. I don't think we're gonna need anywhere near a hundred webpages for our website. The one we have right now is nine pages and is already somewhat more than we need, so that's great. Um, so my, what they said is that they can um move everything over for us. It does take about like one to three months for them to do everything.
Long is the current contract? Are we obligated to that?
So I think it's through the end of September of next year.
Okay.
Um, but my thought is that maybe after the first of the year, we work on uh migrating the website over to the state, just so that if there are any hiccups, we're not running into a deadline with the current website. Get it all up and running, do some troubleshooting. Um, seems pretty user-friendly. There's a couple of different versions, but most of them are really just a straightforward website with links to various.
Are we committed to the full year amount? No refunds?
I want to ask about that. I'm not sure if there's an ability for us to get a refund or not.
Somebody must have had to sign something.
Right, yeah, and I'm not sure.
Okay.
What that is at this point. So. I'll figure that out.
Maybe Rob's got something. He would have had to.
He's the only one that had anything to do with it.
Yeah. Um, yep, details have been difficult to come by, so I'm trying to figure out. I've got a contact person and a login for the website, so I can update it now.
Okay.
And so my next steps are just to figure out, you know, what our um obligations are to them, and if we're able to get a refund, that would be great. If not, you know.
It's, yeah.
At least got us started in having what we needed to keep everything up to code and so we'll kind of.
Well, thank you for doing that with this.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the website was all created. I just had to learn how to use it and post things, which is relatively user-friendly after you get the hang of it, but are there, so as we're developing the website and thinking about sending it over, I, I mean, I'll take a quick look through this, but right now, the only real things that are on here are a homepage where it has some information about Spring Hill, where it's located, and then anytime something new is posted, it's on the front page under highlights.
Okay.
So when I post meeting minutes or post the new link to the meeting, they'll get posted here, uh, and so you can see the most recent three items that have been posted. Then under the meetings section is where all of the meetings will be posted. And so you can go back into the, like, as you scroll through the pages, you can go into older meetings. And so you can go back into the, like, as you scroll through the pages, you can go into older meetings. And if you click on the more info, it will have uh, just the minutes, any memos, the agenda, links, those kinds of things. It's got a spot for the town council and then I'm not sure if you all want your picture up on the website, but we can post pictures if you all are interested. Right now, I kept it pretty basic, just our names and. Yeah, kind of figured we may not need all that, but something we.
Picture of us in our wigs.
Eh, eh, yes, we could, we could do that. I'm not opposed.
Hey Craig, I did find a consulting agreement that Rob had sent me at some point. Don't know if it's final, but I just forwarded it to you.
Oh, thank you.
Whatever it's worth.
No, that's perfect. I will take a look at that.
It says one hundred percent public.
The website, yes, a hundred percent public. So everything that's on here is available to everybody.
Anybody in Indianapolis or the world can.
Correct, yep. Because it is a town website, it's required to be public.
I was just thinking with personal board information, you don't want so much on.
Right, yes. I tried to keep it pretty minimal. Um, so I also in asking more about what has been kind of the protocol before, Rob has used his personal address for everything for the town, which I really did not want on the website. Uh, and so what he's done, I guess, is talked to the USPS, and they said that we could use the SHPA mailbox as well. So that's kind of what, I, I wasn't sure that seems.
And I'm not sure who I, who set that up, because I, I don't even know what that.
Yeah, which Rob set that up. So there's a mailbox, yeah. So he set up the mailbox.
Well, I think Larry Steinberg knows something about that. I think he has the key maybe.
So, when I asked about it, Rob was like, oh, I'll talk to USPS. And then the next thing I knew, I had a key to that mailbox and that it was approved for USPS or by USPS to use that for the town as well.
Well, that's great if it can work that way.
Yeah, as long as SHPA is good with that, I figure having a joint mailbox is not for our town is probably reasonable. Okay, so that's what I'll uh make sure then is posted on the website is just the town addresses, that web um mailbox instead of my home address. I also created a um uh, an email address that actually just, it's a alternate like email address, but it comes to my email so that I get a notification anytime that something is sent there. And then when we get the website through the state, I'm gonna ask if we can create an email address through them, so that it's consistent with the website. Uh, we have some way of passing that on to whoever might take that over. Thinking about the website, are there things that you all think might be helpful to have on there? So we do get the option to create some forms, like if there's anything that might need to get submitted on a regular basis. Um, if it, you know, if we wanted it to be proposals for like projects for the town or inquiries or like agenda items for meetings. I mean, really, we get some flexibility. So I wanted to throw it out and see if there's anything that you're like, yeah, on a website, it would be really nice to have these features.
I was thinking maybe some historical documents. And I know that Suzie is working on that for the Spring Hill Preservation. So she may, she was so excited about that, that she may be able to pull all that together and
Absolutely.
We could post some of that, especially as we lead up, lead up to the hundred-year anniversary.
Yeah, I think a history page would be really great to have. And we could even make a um a, like a form that if she wanted to be able to submit things that she was finding, rather than having to give somebody else access to post things, she could submit them through the web portal and then I could post them or um, do that to create kind of a repository.
Well, we'll talk about that. The, I think our next meeting is two weeks from today. At, at four o'clock or four thirty.
You guys have a mail, I have a post office, a mailbox on Cold Spring Road. You know where it is?
Rob sent it to.
I have the address. I'm just curious where it is.
I'm sorry, you know?
Yep, his personal mailbox. Forty-three fifty-five Cold Spring Road is where grants go to, because I sent a grant.
That's, that's, that's the mailbox here, I think.
It's on, I think it's on Cold Spring, isn't it? Or is it in?
Well, it says forty-three sixty-five Cold Spring Road.
It would be on this side.
So we'll have to go do some exploring and find the mailbox.
There is no forty-three fifty-five.
Right.
I'm forty-three sixty-three.
Okay.
Or Reservation is forty-three fifty-five Cold Spring Road.
It must just pop it into one of these.
Okay.
Well, Brad is forty-three fifteen, and then I'm forty-three sixty-three, and there's no mailbox in between there.
So they must have just created like an address and said, yeah, this is it.
But where's it go?
It must, it must go into one of our.
Yeah, I think what Emily is saying that it's one of those.
It's probably whatever one that Larry picks up.
You know, I just Googled it, and it, the point on it is like the bench by the parking where Bev and I lived, down that end, that end. It's like, there's not even, it's not even a house, but
Yeah.
But it shows it kind of in the middle of Holcombe.
My gosh.
Which is weird.
Well, I know they had checks sent.
The check that was sent to them from my gifting thing, he never got. So they had to reissue it. And he picked it, wherever he checks this box, wherever it is.
We better find out if there's I don't know.
I mean, he'll know, so I'm just saying.
And Rob's got a note too, because he gave me a copy of the key.
Yeah.
So.
But is, is, is that the right number? Is the?
Yeah, I think that's the one. I mean, forty-three fifty-five sounds correct.
Well, that, he got the check.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, and that's the one I think that Rob had told me as well. With, I'm with you.
Well, Larry now, Larry knows because he picked it up.
Yeah, yeah. Um, we're going to take a quick pause here. Lana, if you would log off, I'm going to log off and then we'll log back in in a minute. Awesome.